At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing notice, excuse me, the public hearing for the town of Southbridge. I'd like to recognize the town manager at this point to read the regs.
Thank you. Calling this to order pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 140, Section 157, the town council is conducting a dog hearing as a result of a written report by the Southbridge Animal Control regarding dangerous dog incidents involving a dog owned by Darius Bass of 483 Alpine Drive. The purpose of this hearing is to determine whether the dog is a dangerous dog, and if so, what if any action should be taken by the town council. I'm going to explain some rules. All persons who wish to speak must first be recognized by Chairman Lazo. All those wishing to speak must introduce themselves by name and address or affiliation and be sworn in. The hearing will be coordinated by the town manager, and I will assist in the council by any questions with witnesses answering questions from council members. This hearing will proceed in three parts. First, the town council will hear testimony and consider evidence from the town animal control officer and police department. Second, the council will hear any testimony and consider evidence from the owner of the dog, as well as anyone who wishes to testify or present evidence on the dog's behalf. And third, the council will deliberate over the evidence and may vote to render a decision. During the evidentiary portion of the hearing, each individual will have five minutes to speak. Caitlin Spencer, the animal control officer, will be heard first, followed by any member of the police department. If a speaker feels that more time may be needed, they may ask the council chairman to grant additional time. The council chairman may grant or deny the request for additional time, and the extra time will be granted in five-minute segments. During any testimony, members of the council may question the speaker. Time spent answering any questions will not count against your speaker's time. At no time during the hearing will outbursts or interruptions be allowed, and it is expected that all parties will act with the proper decorum. Anyone who refuses to follow the directives of Chairman Lazo will be excluded from speaking for the remainder of the proceeding. So now, anybody that wishes to provide any testimony in regards to this, I would ask that you stand up. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth? So help you God. I am going to put this notepad over at the speaker over there, and if you testify, I will ask you to write your name and address and what participative that you have. Okay. Mr. Chairman, if you want to call Caitlin Spencer first, I guess?
I'd like to have the animal control officer, Caitlin Spencer.
Good evening. Caitlin Jewell, Southbridge Animal Control.
Sorry, Caitlin, I did have that corrected. I apologize.
That's okay. So my office has received two complaints of Mr. Bass's dogs, Nico and his other dogs, actually two dogs that Mr. Bass owns. My office was notified on two occasions that Mr. Bass's dogs have left his property and went over onto Mrs. McGary's property and caused some injuries to her dog Harper and also to the owner at the same time as she was trying to break up the dog fights. The second event, the dogs, Mr. Bass's dogs actually went into Mrs. McGary's house. The dogs were outside, ended up into her house, and she received some injuries regarding that. My understanding is there is limited fencing on the property separating the two properties at the time of the first event. I had a discussion with Mr. Bass in regards to having a proper containment system in his property, make sure that there's locks on the doors, there's also small children in the house, and to try to eliminate having the small children, letting the dogs out. At that time with the first one, I took an educational approach to let Mr. Bass know about our dog licenses policies, make sure the dogs are current on the rabies vaccines. The dogs were on a 10-day quarantine, which they passed the rabies quarantine. And then unfortunately, their second event happened on December 26. There was no proper containment put in place after the first attack. The dogs, actually, Mr. Bass was issued a 21D for the dogs running loose at that time, so enforcement actions were taken at that December incident. Mrs. McGary is, was at that time of the reports, pretty upset and distraught. She was very vocal with me about her own safety and her family's safety with these dogs when they get loose. She was the one, I informed her if she wanted to do the hearing process, that she could take care of the complaint if she didn't want to wait for another incident to happen. With my enforcement policy, depending upon the incident, there's steps taken in place. But if the person wants to speed up that process, they're more than likely, more than welcome to make the complaint. So here we are with two attacks with her dog Harper. That's what I have for just a summary in the events of what happened with, between the two addresses. I did check the dog license records today, and both parties, both dogs are, all three dogs from those two properties are not licensed right now, but we can work with that to get that taken care of.
Are there any questions of the animal control officer at this time? Counselor McKeddie, the counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So what is your recommendation?
So my recommendation, under the state statute, I would be to order both of the canines as nuisance dogs, so the council can put a stronger provision on the fencing system. My recommendation would be a four-sided fence that's totally enclosed with a double-door system on the house, so in the event if the door is open, there's a secondary barrier to stop the dogs from running loose.
Thank you. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Quick question, you said the fencing. Originally, if I'm read right, you told them to put some fencing up and recommended fencing, right?
So with my educational approach with the first attack was to get a containment system for the two dogs. It could be an electric fence, whatever mechanism that would be most effective of containing the dogs to the property and not leaving the property.
That was your recommendation, correct?
On the first one, yes.
Has a fence been put up?
Yes.
So if there's a four-sided fence?
There is not a four-sided fence on the property. There is a fence line, to my understanding, dividing the two properties, but if the dogs get loose, they could just walk around that fence and go on to...
Can you tell me how far that fence, does it go to the wood line all the way to the street?
I cannot tell you how far it goes.
You're all, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Shing.
You've made three attempts to rectify the problem, or two times?
So it was two events, two attacks. The first attack, the first incident was educational approach with the owner, recommendations on how to rectify a possible future issue. And then with the second attack, that's when I used enforcement through our 21D policy.
The letter that we get from one of the neighbors is three incidents. One happening in the summer of '22, the second incident was March of '23, and the third incident was December 26 of '23.
I have two instances that were reported to my department. The owner did mention that there was others, but she did not report it to my department. So I only have two recorded.
And with the educational approach that you did, part of that education was to fence in, proper fencing?
I am only able to give recommendations.
Right, I understand.
So my recommendation at the first approach for the first event was containment and methods of containment.
And you have since not seen that containment done?
Because I'm unable to order it, so I can recommend it, but they are, there's no obligations for anybody to follow through with my recommendations.
Now, have you been on the property to see if that recommendation has been?
I have not been on the property, but with the second event, I had a discussion with Mr. Bass when I was giving him his 21Ds, his citations for the dogs getting off of the property. That's when the discussion was given, was taken about how the four-sided fence was not done.
In other instances that happen in other parts in your business that you do, have you found that requiring a dog to be muzzled once, when they're outside, is an option to have?
So my role for an animal control officer, I cannot order anybody to do anything with their pets. That's what the hearing authority is able to do. My position is enforcement of laws being broken, so I can't put an order on somebody because I don't have the jurisdiction to do so.
I understand that part of what I'm asking, have you found talking to your other colleagues and when you have an issue like this that comes before council or other towns, maybe voter selectmen, if they recommended muzzling of a dog, have you ever heard if that works versus as a case of last resort?
The hearing authority can order muzzling of a dog. I would hesitate with that type of order because if you just muzzle a dog, put it outside, how do you know, and not pay attention to it? How do you know if that dog's gonna, one, it's still gonna leave the property, it's still gonna get itself in trouble. You run into the risk of the dog overheating, it could get snagged. So I would not recommend muzzling just as a blank recommendation if the animal is tethered to an individual going out on public way, then the recommend, I would say that could be effective, but just to muzzle a dog to let it go outside, like I said, the dog can still leave the property, it's still in violation of our town bylaws with public nuisance.
So your job would be to enforce what we come up with, as long as within the law?
If, whatever is ordered today, if there's a violation of your guys' order, it's my, I'm the one that's gonna be enforcing what the order is in regards, like with 21Ds.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. So when you say you order, not order, recommend to have a fence all over the property, can the owner only do, like, let's say 20 by 20 only for the dog, he doesn't have to do the whole property? Is that possible too, or?
With my...
I don't know, I'm sorry. I didn't know the size of his property, how big it, but maybe he can section one, you know, the backyard, let's say 20 by 20, just for the dog, just a fence, you know, enough not the dog run or jump, go to the neighbor, is that possible? Doesn't have to do the whole, I mean, maybe have three acres, four acres, I mean, and I feel bad seeing, you know, we all have dogs, we all love dogs, I understand, you know, different dogs and, you know, just maybe he can, again, I'm just asking, you know.
So my recommendation, yes, fencing in three acres is very expensive, but what I would encourage for a fence would be if you have two exits or three exits on a house, to make sure that those encompass the fencing. So if a small child does open up a door by accident, because life happens, the dog's gonna be caught by the fence.
That makes sense.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So just so I understand this correctly, based on the law, you can either deem a dog a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog, and it seems like the difference is that a nuisance dog says you may take further action, a dangerous dog, you have to do something about it. Is that just the only difference, really? No?
No. So with a dangerous dog, if you guys choose to deem this, both dogs danger, you are stuck with the five recommendations under the dangerous dog recommendations.
I get you. So if it's a nuisance dog, you can choose one from that list?
You guys could choose all of it, you guys could choose one, you guys could be like, hey, I don't, what's on the five lists, five things on the list doesn't really suit the situation, like I would say having the double-door situation, or have it fenced so all exits and entrances are enclosed by a fence. You wouldn't be able to do that under the dangerous dog section, you can do that under the nuisance dog.
Okay.
Because the nuisance dog clause is just, you guys are just gonna put an order to fix the problem. If there's a violation in regards to that, let's say all the fence doors are open and the house is open and the dogs run loose, then another hearing would be conducted, and then you guys can step it up to another notch.
Okay. So basically, since there was only two events, just to make sure this is clear to everybody, the first time you were told, you just suggested a fence, but one side doesn't really do anything. Now you're looking for exits for the house to be closed in by four sides.
That would be my recommendation, to keep the property safe. Mrs. McGary was the one who made the complaint for, is requesting the hearing because of the events that she went through.
Understood, okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Counselor Rivas.
I just want to clarify on the initial recommendation, when you gave that suggestion, was the fencing that is there now, was that part of the suggestion, or was it just suggested that they do the four enclosed, four-sided enclosed fencing?
So when I, generally, whenever somebody is having issues with containment, I just have a general conversation about, let's get some four-sided containment, so the dogs can't get out of the property.
Okay. So that's just sort of like your standard recommendation to people, and then they decided to have sort of like a lesser type of fencing?
Like I stated earlier, I can only make recommendations, I can't like say you have to do this to your property, so.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Excuse me. You said that the dogs weren't licensed, is that all three dogs, or is it just Mr. Bass's dogs?
So all three dogs were licensed for the year of 2023, now we're in 2024, and all three of them are not current.
And when's the deadline for licenses to be issued in 2024?
April 1st was the last day for 2024.
Can you tell me what the current rabies vaccine status is then for the dogs?
They were all current when I checked this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Counselor Shing.
Just one more. Reading the report that the animal control officer did was, he spoke to the gentleman about educational methods, and he was informed that a fence was going to be built. I would guess that the fence to be built was in the educational part of it on how to do it. Am I correct?
The conversation that I had on the first event was, we had a conversation about having a fence put up, and then there was discussions of that there would be a fence to be built, and it was not built.
So that's my concern. So he said it would be built, but it has not been built.
It, as of right now, to my knowledge, a four-sided containment system has not been put on the property.
Any other questions by any councils? If not, Caitlin, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Next up, the chief. LaZette. Okay, we'll be looking on to one of the people speaking on behalf of this group. Go to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Lauren McGary. I live at 501 Alpine Drive, right next door to the dogs. I don't know what I'm supposed to say.
Do you have anything additional that you want to add outside of the animal control officer's report? You don't have to add anything, or if you have anything else relative that you want to add?
Well, there is, only because it's gotten to the point now where we're afraid to put her out at all and just be outside, because they've come back to the house again after I wrote that letter to you, and we're just like trying to get through my front door. Thank God we were all in the house, but they got loose and came right to my front door. They went past the fence that was up and ran up the driveway to us. So it's come to a point that the only time we're comfortable letting her outside is when my husband's home, because he's big enough to do something about it. So, so we've had a couple more incidents, no injury incidents after the ones that you saw, but just getting loose.
Any questions by any councils? Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mrs. McGary.
Yes.
Has the dogs, dog or dogs, they come up to your property, have they ever gone after humans as far as yourself, your husband, your children?
We were in the wrong place probably, because when it happened, we all kind of, me and the kids, all tried to grab our dog and get her out of the way, so we all ended up in it. So I don't think that they targeted us, I think, for some reason, they're just targeting Harper. I don't know why.
Okay.
Because I haven't heard any other neighbors having problems, which is good.
Could you answer this question?
Yes.
The fence that's been erected up, can you tell me how long that, I don't need footage or anything like that, but just, is it from the tree line?
It's from about, maybe like five feet in from the street and goes down the path of property between us, and then just ends. So it's just a line.
Thank you very much.
And they did go around that the last time they came up.
They went around the backside of it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor McKeddie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, and I hate to be redundant, but just reading the report, those dogs from your neighbors come on to your property, your dog doesn't go on to their property.
She's been on before when she's gotten loose, like a loose dog does, but she sniffs around looking for something, and then she's back. But she's mostly on a lead, like if she goes outside, she's on a leash. We have one in the front door, one in the back door. If she wants to go out, she's on a lead the whole time.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion by any other councils? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Would you like to speak next? Oh, go ahead.
Just make sure you sign in.
Hi, I'm Abigail McGary, and I live at 501 Alpine Drive. I've never done this before, but I just know that I can't let my dog out when I'm home alone without being terrified, because I couldn't even fend off like one dog, especially two. And I know I'm terrified to even go to school, because I don't want my mom to be home alone with the dogs, with the dog, so that, because she's gonna have to let her out at some point to go to the bathroom, and I just don't want anything happening when she's, when I'm gone and no one else is there, because I don't want to hurt any animals, so I'm just not really sure what to do.
Any questions by any councils? Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just, I just want to be certain, have there ever been any incidents involving just people and not Harper?
No, only the dog has been attacked. We were only injured because of the dog getting attacked.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion by council? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on that side of the issue to speak?
With any new or irrelevant information, anything new that we haven't considered? You just go to the podium if you're gonna speak.
Go ahead.
Hi, Matt McGary, 501 Alpine Drive, Southbridge. The biggest issue I see is that the containment around the house, they have kids, and kids leave doors open, dogs get out. It's inevitable, so the issue that I believe needs to happen is, and she discusses, is the entire house needs to be contained, four sides, a circle, whatever. That's the issue. Those dogs will be in our yard in a matter of seconds, they can go around the fence. That's the entire, that's the entire issue, is they're just, they're targeting our dog for some reason, I don't know why, and we're, the dog, if the dog even hears the dog's yipping, instantly right back to wanting to go inside. So it's, and my two kids are kind of scared to be outside, especially when our dog is outside, you know? So that's all I have to say.
You just sign in?
Yeah.
Other any questions from Mr. McGary? Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Mr. McGary, and maybe Mr. Bass, if he gets up there and speaks, how big are these dogs, by chance? I can't, I don't see anything in here, I may have mistaken. How big are they?
They, one's pretty small, but pretty aggressive, and the other one is, I don't, I don't know, I'm not a good judge of weight of dogs, I'd probably say one's about 70, 80, and then the other one's probably about 40 pounds.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, that's all I got.
Any other discussion or questions by council? If not, thank you very much. We're also going to move on to Mr. Bass. Bass, you're up.
First and foremost, thank you, council, and I always want to apologize to the McGary family. Every time the incident does happen, I happen to not be at home, and I am the enforcer in my home, so again, I apologize that I'm not there to, you know, fix the problem. When we first had a discussion with the animal officer here, like she said, we put a containment fence up that they've seen between our land...
Can you speak into the mic, so we can hear?
Sorry. Between our land, that she's able to see. Since then, we have put up a four-by-four enclosure and a door on our backyard. I have photo evidence, if you guys would like to take a look at it. The original photo is how our land looked before with no fence, and then moving forward, you'll see that we put fences, and we do have, we have obtained shock collars for the dogs as well. So they are not able to get out of said door, like I said, if the front door is open, unless that gate door is open, again, like she said, so that's two doors, and then in the backyard, two sliding doors and a gate, so three doors that they'd have to get out, or somebody would have to leave, leave open in order for them to get to the yard. And when the situation did happen, again, I was not home, usually I work during the day, but I just wanted to say that I was the one that initiated the phone call with the animal officer both times to make sure that everything, you know, did move forward the proper way, and, you know, we weren't hiding. Obviously, the dogs did what we did, and when they did that, we did pay the vet bill that, you know, was due at the time, so, and he was correct, my little dog is 40 and the big dog is 80, and their dog is just the closest, not that it's an excuse, and again, I apologize for everything that did happen, but, you know, it is what it is, it happened, and like I said, we're doing what we can, our due diligence, to not spend a million dollars on the four-yard fence.
Are there any questions by any councils at this time, Mr. Bass?
When did the additional fencing or the doors get put in?
So originally, like she said, she told, gave me the recommendation of, you know, a certain amount of fencing, so we put up that containment fence, assuming that if they did run, they'd see the fence and come back, which they didn't, like they said, they run up my driveway, which is what I heard from the people that were home, so they run up the driveway and get around. So after that happened the second time, like she said, we put the full containment in, so that was probably January, it was cold out, so I know I did it in the cold weather.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you. You said you got shock collars, do those have like the, did you make like a border?
No, it's not a fence, it's just a prong on their neck, like a regular collar.
Okay, so it's like a remote sort of thing?
Yeah, correct, correct.
Yeah, I'm... Yeah, I'm not huge into shock collars, but...
Yeah, me either.
My neighbor's dog has the fencing thing, I've seen it, but the only other thing I had, and I probably should have asked the ACO for this, I was looking at the reports and it said, did you call, did you go in in April?
I did.
I think she said the last incident was December.
No, I called both times, just the both times that it happened.
There was one report at the end that said that you went into the lobby in April? I mean, maybe I'm...
Recently, I went into the lobby for, because I was applying to be a police officer because they called me, but...
Oh, it said, okay, I'm sorry, this is 2023, my mistake, I thought it said 2024.
Recently, this year I was in the lobby, but not dog related.
Understood, okay, so it goes back to December and you put up the fence in January?
Correct.
Got it, yeah, my mistake, that was 2023, I'm on set, Mr. Chairman.
Any other question, Mr. Town Manager?
Just clarify, when you say shock collar, is it an invisible fence, shock collar? Or is it a distance, or is it in the house?
Just, just on their neck, and it's like a buzzer, like he had asked.
So you have to activate it yourself?
But we do have a, I mean, she made a difference between containment and barrier. I know one, like she said, was four corners. We have made an enclosure for them where they have to get out two doors, along with what was already presented of the containment fence that's along our properties.
And nobody from the animal control or police department has gone out to verify any of that since this last...
No, they've been to my house, but not to verify the fencing, correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Virginia?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. What concerns me is this incident has been taking place since 2022. We're in 2024, and it seems like now the time is push comes to shove that you decided to do something proper. You were, if I may, you were recommended to do an enclosure, and all you did was just go from one end to the other end, hoping the dog would see the fence and stop. That wasn't what she recommended in the, to you in the educational part of this whole thing. My concern is dogs getting out and hurting somebody. We're lucky at this point in time where the injuries that they sustained was a result of breaking up the dogs or getting away from your dogs to take care of the other dogs. We had injuries we can see to the dogs, I believe you offered to pay, and rightfully so, it was your dog that created the problem. But I have a hard time sitting here and seeing that this had been ongoing since 22, and here we are in the middle of 24, and it's just starting to get fixed, if you want to call it fixed. You just did the fence, and I think you probably did the fence knowing that you were coming here for a hearing, and that, that concerns me. I love dogs, I love animals, I've got a mean, mean Chihuahua, but I think we need to work, I don't want to see the dog destroyed, I don't want anything like that, but I, for me, I'm hoping that the dog officer can tell me if we require the dog to be tethered, if that would be something, so...
So now in 2020, you say go back to 2022. In 2022, the original instance was that we had just moved to the area and my dogs, you know, were navigating the land, which is what the original instance was, nothing had happened to their dog, I mean, again, not that it's good or bad that they got over there. The original education was one or the other, not the full containment. She said that it, it's a, she would recommend doing a containment fence or a barrier fence, so what I did was take the initial step to put the fence between the land, assuming that the dogs would not get over there. Now, the second instance happened, again, apologizing so to the family there, is which when I made the barrier fence that they cannot get out, so it's not a matter that I'm waiting for something to happen, I just made the steps, the proper steps, when something did happen.
I understand that, but in the written stuff that we got, it's, it's pretty specific on what happened in December of 22, that the dogs went on the property...
Right.
Went on the porch and basically attacked the dogs. That's what the December report at least says, it's not the dogs looking to find their place.
Right, which is after the fence I put between the land, so when that happened is when I made the fence, because I assumed that that fence would be enough, which, again, obviously it wasn't.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Dowdell and Town Manager?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Again, I'm sorry about your balls and where you're going, but it seems like you're, you're there alone, you, I can see you guys, good people, good neighbors, I'm not, you know, the way I see it, and he's trying to do his best, and he's not like ignoring or walking away from, walking away from the problems, and what you can promise us tonight, the next step you do, like the officer recommends, four corners for the house, like you say, you have kids, you might open the doors, maybe the column you put, I don't know if they can put like a wire in the ground, electrics, I don't know if that will work, same like the fence, maybe, some certain electric wire in the ground. What you can promise tonight, the councilors, to resolve that problem between you and your neighbor and save your dog. Any, any, any thing you willing to do?
Yes, just, just like, you know, like the pictures show, every time there was an incident, again, the incidents had to happen because I, again, I assumed that the original fence that I put up would be enough, so it's, I'm unable to know whether that's enough or not unless something happens, which, again, I don't want to happen, but now that it did happen, the dogs cannot get out of the yard without the second gate being open, like she had stated. My first door gets open, and they're in their area where they're contained, four walls, they can't get out unless the additional gate is open, and then there's an additional fencing between our yard.
When you say they can't get out, that mean you have a fence around the whole house or only the back doors? In the front, if they get out from the front, they can go on the street?
So just the front, if you open the front door, it's contained, four walls, back, two sliding doors, you have to open, and there's a gate on my deck as well, they can't get out. So again, they'd have to get out two doors each way, front and back.
Okay, okay.
Town Manager?
Thank you, I just want to be clear for the record because this is a public hearing. I have, in summer of 2022, the dogs got out, you had just moved there, there was a minor incident, no police report, no activity from animal control.
Correct.
Then I have March of 23 is the first incident with the dog.
Correct.
And then December of 23, not December of 22, is that correct?
Correct, it was recent.
By police reports, he keeps referencing, one of the questioners keeps referencing, December of 22 was this incident, and it's been two years, so that's not the case. You have two reports, one in March of 23, one in December of 23, is that correct?
I believe they were both last year, yeah, not 2022.
By, by the police reports and the reports that we have, that's what we have.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and then your testimony that after the December incident, you put up the four walls on or about in the January cold months, is that correct?
Correct, like I have pictured there, correct, yeah.
Okay. And you have taken all action that you could possibly to contain these dogs at this time, is that correct?
I put, I put forward all action that was recommended in the educational information from the animal officer, like she said, to make a barrier where the dogs cannot get out unless, you know, somebody puts effort to get out, but whatever, you know, again, when she gave me the educational information, I did with it what she told me to, and whatever it is that we do need to do to make sure that their dog is safe is what needs to be done.
Just to be clear, thank you.
Councilor Rivas?
So since you did the second piece in January, there have been no further incidents with the dogs?
Not to my knowledge, and not that's on record, so, again, I'm usually not home during the day, and when I am home, I'm the enforcer in the house, so the dogs stay by my side. Even if I was to let them out, they stay by my side, and I do try, I have tried to communicate with them one time, making sure that their dog was outside so they could roam their area, so that way their dog did stay safe, which they weren't home, so I left, kept my dogs inside, but I do try to communicate, you know, with them, so that way if there is a possibility, everybody's safe, which, again, with all the doors and the gates that are up now and all the devices that we do have, it's not that it's not impossible, but we made it so that way they are safe.
Okay, I'd love to, I guess, hear whether the neighbors were aware of, of the new barriers, and whether you feel that that would be secure enough.
So I believe they provided testimony. If somebody wants to just rebut that one question, I would ask you to come up.
Yeah.
By testimony, the, has been testimony provided here today that nobody from the police department or animal control has gone to verify that? I believe that would be his next step, to go out and verify that, to see if it's adequate, but that would be determination for the council to determine.
Mr. Bass, before we move on, are we going to keep these and enter it, enter it as evidence?
Yes, you can keep those.
Thank you. Continue, Ms. Rivas.
Yeah, I guess I, I guess I'd love to hear from animal control again as well as, now that he's submitted this information, sort of what your recommendation would be at this point.
My understanding of how the procedure of the hearing is supposed to work is you guys make the, you either dismiss the complaint, deem the dog's a nuisance, or you deem the dog dangerous. If you guys deem him as a nuisance, then we can take under the steps that he has done since this complaint has been issued, and you guys can be like, what he's done has been satisfactory. If I go to the property and say, yes, there's no way for these dogs to leave, that would be something to do, and in that way, you guys have something moving forward if there was an incident to happen in between these two time periods.
Councilor Dowdell?
Thank you, Chair, through you. So you say, and we're going to make an action to see if the dog dangerous or not, but pretty much the dog's not attacking any human being, except when a human being came to separate those dog when it was, you know, attacking each other or fighting, whatever that time. In your experience, you think when a dog go after another dog, is it dangerous dog?
So with my history of coming forth in front of the council, with my previous recommendations with other situations, it's always been, let's deem these dogs a nuisance, and then if by chance another thing happens, we can always amp it up and change that to a dangerous. In that way, it gives the opportunity for the involved party to modify what they need to without having that serious title put on those two dogs.
So now if Mr. Bass, I believe, did what technically, I'm sure not hundred percent what you want, but he's working with you, and since January, the dog is no incident after that? Any other report happen, any other attack you know about?
After the December incident, there has been no other incidences reported to my office. I don't know if something's happened that hasn't been reported, but as to my knowledge, my office has been, been reported to physical incidences that happened.
And we never, none of the officer or anybody went to the scene and checked if Mr. Bass did what you request him for, to hear it today, to be able to make a decision if he's working, was all of you to make sure the neighbor's safe, the dog, and your recommendation or your, teach him what, you know, to be safe for everyone, did you ever went there and check after, before you come here?
With the December incident, one of the South Bridge police officers did respond since it was during my time, it was over the weekend and I wasn't in the office, just to make sure there wasn't a public safety issue that was happening. Again, it was just dog on dog, which a human got injured with separating, but it wasn't an attack of a human on a dog. I think from my understanding, it was a little, it would freak me out if somebody's dog was outside attacking my dog, which ended up into my house, so I could understand why, you know, a police officer was sent to make sure, again, it wasn't a public safety issue. So in regards to the hearing, what you're saying, or my understanding of what you're saying, why hasn't there been a check of the household and the property? It's because if I go to the property and fences are put up, that's great, fences not put up, that's fine. Mrs. McGary's family was the one that came forward to you guys with the complaint of these dogs are a nuisance or a danger, so even if I did go to the property and say, hey, these things weren't done, I cannot enforce that because there's no order put in place.
Correct. I'm not asking to enforce, but at least we can make a decision, we have, we have the information you're going to give to us. Like today, we have some picture saying he did close what you recommend, at the same time, none of the town went there and checked and make sure he did what he's saying, or, I mean, you have a picture, or to take your recommendation, at least you can say, yes, I swam by there, he did have a fence, I feel fifty percent or zero percent safe. I mean, right now, the, the neighbors are scared, the gentleman, he say he did most what you recommend, much as he can, and we're going to make a decision on two, two dogs and a neighbor's safety, and we don't have all the information, I feel like.
So just to kind of help with your guys' decision tonight, for liability purposes, you guys had a citizen come to you guys looking for a hearing to have these dogs deemed, you know, either have the complaint dismissed, dogs deemed a nuisance, dogs deemed a danger, right? If they're, if it's dismissed, you guys took action to take care of the problem? If you guys deem the dogs a nuisance, then you guys took action to solve the problem? If you guys deem the dogs dangerous, then you guys took action to solve the problem? So that would be my recommendation, is that a decision...
If the gentleman did what you ask him, and you think the dog is not dangerous attacking a human, I mean, animal, you know, any animal will attack animal and generally, you know, you know, I believe if we come now and dismiss the complaint and the gentleman, he didn't complete what you recommend, I mean, we have, some of that information is not available, so how are we going to make that decision? At the same time, I don't think those dogs are dangerous the way, you know, they're not attacking a human, I mean, it's normal when you get in between a human fight, the person is going to get a kick here and there, never mind dogs.
So if you guys choose to dismiss the complaint...
Excuse me, Matt, no decision has to be made this evening.
Correct.
We can take this under advisement.
Thank you.
Review the decision, so no decision needs to be made this evening, just to be clear for all parties.
Right, correct.
So, there's no decision that has to be made this evening, just to be clear.
That's what was my most concern, you know, we're going to make a decision tonight, and we don't have most information. I'd like to verify if Mr. Bass did what the officer recommend, and how the neighbor feel if they recommend something else, they think the dog might escape here and there's, and maybe we can work something before we make the final decision, that's, I will, if we can work on that.
There'll be no decision tonight, we're taking everything under advisement. Councilor Martin, go ahead.
Just my concern would be is if there wasn't an order put in place, regardless of what, you know, if it's dismissed or from the conclusion of the hearing, if another incident was to happen, that would just be my concern, if the doors aren't contained properly with a double, so...
Again, this is a hearing, to take evidence. We're taking evidence, if we have the right to have, continue the hearing to the next available date to gather any further evidence. So to say that there's a liability issue, we're taking this under advisement, okay? Just to be clear.
Thank you, Chair, thank you.
Councilor Martin?
Thank you. That was where I was trying to go with this, is the liability of now that you've told the town council, and if the town council doesn't do anything, are you completely sure that if the dog were to get out tomorrow, that we couldn't be sued because we've decided to take it under advisement instead? Maybe through to the town manager, the chief, or somebody, I just, I worry about, this is when someone brings something towards this, because it's, to me, we don't have the information about the fence, we could, we could put an order to put the fence, and then she goes and says, is the fence a hundred percent? No, maybe it's only seventy-five, he still has to work over the next month to get it to be a hundred, and in the end, we did say, complete your fence to the standards of the ACO, where it lies right now, he could be twenty-five percent done, he could be a hundred percent done, but, I mean, if a fence... But, I mean, if a fence would make everybody happy and he's already doing it and it would cover the liability, I just would feel safer just saying, stamp it, do the fence, work with the ACO until it's satisfactory, so that if something were to happen tomorrow, town of Southbridge doesn't get sued. But that's just my, my two cents on the matter.
Animal control officer, you had, you were waving at me.
Uh, I just went through a training for a dangerous nuisance dog hearing, um, through the animal control academy. You guys are addressing the problem right now, so my understanding was, is as you guys are actively trying to find a solution for the problem, um, you guys should be covered. That was my understanding from the training.
Well, anybody can be sued. Well, we can't, yeah, I got you. I understand what you mean. Thank you very much.
Councilor Junior?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of the difficulty I have is for us to come and make this decision in the next coming weeks or whatever, is there appears to be a lack of follow-up on the town. Where the incident happened going back in 22 and 23 and here we are, 24. Maybe I'm wrong, but it appears that animal control went there a couple of times and there was no follow-up where we could ask, have, have they been there for complaints that didn't get to you? Police officers responding to that address, uh, multiple? How many times did that happen? Those kind of things, I think, help us make a decision. I, I just feel as we're lacking a little bit on follow-up. And, and that's all I got for tonight.
Just clarification, if I could.
Go ahead. Town manager?
Mrs. McGary put in the complaint for the dangerous dog here. The animal control officer did what she was supposed to do according to her regulations. She provided guidance. It was up to the complainant to put the complaint through. They put it through to the town manager's office in February. We were unable to get it on the calendar till now. Okay? Through various reasons, we probably should have gotten earlier, but there was some health issues on one side and all that. So to say that the town's not taking action is not correct. The town had taken action. The complainant came through in February, we just got it on the calendar. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Okay? The town has been taking action.
Councilor Rivas?
Appreciate that.
Now, just, I guess, a question to the town manager, um, through you, Mr. Chair. Are we able to, um, kind of either pending or pending dismissal upon verification that the fencing is up to standards and, and complies with the recommendation of the ACO and then come back and be able to dismiss at that point in time? Is that something that we can do?
We're here to gather all the information. We're finding out that, um, we have supposedly pictures here of a fence that's been constructed on four sides, keep the dog contained, a deck with doors. We're going to take this all under advisement and we probably will talk with the animal control officer further. She might have, I mean, the pictures are what they are, if she goes up and looks at it, and then after we can reconvene and get the information verified, and then after we can make a good informed decision. And I think tonight, what I, what the intent was, to get all the information in the box during the hearing and then handle it at the next meeting. Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question, and you may have, Mr. Bass, you may have already answered this, you probably did it 100 times. The date that you put up the fence that secured your front area, when was that? What day did you do that?
Prior to the date of, that I got any information to come in front of the town council. Like I said, I called her first before anybody else called her. And af- I'd say a week after I called her, we put up the secondary barrier. Again, like I said, there's two, a containment and a barrier. One containing the dogs in four corners and one, I guess, barreering them off from their land.
Yeah, I just want, I just really was wanting to figure out where, where those, what days were those?
So they called in December, I'd say, well, I called in December, making the report, I'd say, like I said, January, a week or two after the, the initial report was maybe.
So the, in January timeframe, that's when you put that four fence step and all that kind of stuff?
Right after we spoke to her, yeah.
I, I will say this, I'm going to ask that the, uh, somebody, if it's allowed, allow the McGarrys come up here, because when, when you talked about the dogs not being on their property, all of them shook their head, no. Um, that, that's not accurate. So I may be wrong on that assumption, but if somebody from the McGarrys could clarify my assumption?
Hi, um, they, I don't know the exact time that they did come back onto the property, but we were all inside and the dog was inside, so no attack happened, but they did come back onto the property after the second attack.
Can you give me an estimate, a month?
It was probably February, February, I'd say, because I know it was winter out, so.
Was Mr. Bass notifying of that?
I'm not sure. I, okay then.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just asking the questions just from my own evidence here at this point in time. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, I, I, and I don't want to go off track, but dismissing a nuisance dog case or dangerous dog is, is a dangerous precedence in the first place, so that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the ACO first. Am I mistaken or, according to the leash law, if a dog cannot be contained within a given area, then it must be on a leash?
There is a cable system, um, order under the dangerous part that would fall for this.
So the dog has to be, if the dog cannot be contained in an area, a given area, it has to be tethered to something? A person, a tree, a cable set up?
I don't have the direct statue in front of me, but yes, it needs to have an appropriate cable system.
Right, to restrain the dog from wandering off.
Right, it just, it can't be tied to like a, like a porch, you know? It needs to be like a secure, like I said, I don't have the statue for that limitation for the, the tethering, um, part in front of me right now, so I can't quote it off the top of my head. But there is a clause if, if a physical fence cannot be built, there's an alternative to that.
Okay. Mr. Bass, um, how are the dogs getting loose to begin with? We've been talking about?
Again, me not being there, it's just hearsay. Um, so both times, they're excited to see people, especially the people that they live with. Um, so I, I guess both times, the first time, my dad had came home, he was living, living with me at the time, and he came home, they opened the door, they ran out, they went to see him and then heard the dog and ran across the yard. Again, this is what I get from the people that are home at the time. Second time, same thing, somebody came home, they opened the door, maybe like my daughter, she's a little bit smaller, she opens the door, they run out the door to go see who came home and ran into the yard. Again, the second time, uh, around, up, up the driveway around, but I'm, I'm assuming from them being excited to see a person and a dog, but whoever opened the door just didn't contain them.
So then it's entirely possible that someone could enter your deck and the dogs are happy and the dogs get through the open door on the deck and out into the yard and the yard is not contained?
You talking about the back or the front? Right now, currently, if the, both my back door slider doors open, if my doors are open from my house, there's a gate, no, they can't get out. If the front door currently where they, both, both times they got out from, if you open the front door, no, the gate is enclosed, it's enclosed.
Do your, do your guests understand that the first door that they enter needs to be closed before the second door is opened?
I mean, it's an assumption, but no, it's a gate. Do the guests know that they need to shut the gate doors? Is that what you're asking me?
Well, my concern is, is that if the yard is not entirely contained and the dogs work loose again, then they're free to go anywhere.
No, if you leave my, if you leave my home door, there's another door that they have to leave out of.
All right. Okay.
Just like in the picture.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, we have somebody from McGary's side who would like to talk. Could you approach it? Write your name and address on the pad there.
Hi, I am Jennifer Gatsky. I'm sister to Lauren McGary. Um, I spend a lot of time at their house and with the dog. Um, I just want to say, I, I understand, I, my address is actually in Webster, I live in Webster, um, Mass. I want to say, I understand we all love dogs. No one wants to see anything happen to a dog. Um, and I also want to say that this, obviously you can see that they've been traumatized by this and the dog is traumatized. Nobody can go outside, we're always worried about it. This is absolutely a public safety concern. All of us have a regular immune system, my sister does not. She's highly compromised. If she's the one who's at home 100% of the time, that she's not at the clinic and she's responsible for the dog. If she has to try to rescue the dog and they break skin, I can't tell you how dangerous that is. And that's what we all worry about all the time, when she's alone at home with her dog. We also, in the past, have had two fox hounds, which were great dogs, um, but they had shock collars and those shock collars did not work. You shock them and they were so rambunctious, especially if they were together, they would just keep going. And it's awful to shock a dog. It looks like you're electrocuting them, it's horrible. No one likes to do that, but the fact that they still kept going, it's not a comfort to us as we need, I know there's no guarantees in life, we need a guarantee that this is not going to happen again, period, because we can't afford to have it happen again.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can you just sign in and put your address?
Yes.
No questions, my counsel?
And they also don't want anything to happen with their relationship, obviously they're good neighbors and they've been very attentive to, you know, the complaints, they were apologetic and they paid the bills and we want to keep a good relationship, but we also cannot let this happen again.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr. Bass? If not, thank you very much. Are there any other questions of the animal control officer? If not, I would like to consider this, uh, hearing closed. Thank you very much. We will not be making a decision tonight, but you will hear from the council formally in writing on the ruling. Thank you.